Do you have a motion to approve?
Make that question.
On the second. All in favor say aye. To the other page, motion case. Moving on to public comments, this is an opportunity for individuals in the town to share about their concerns or wishes for the town. Are there any public comments with me?
Everybody online.
Uh, let me see.
To be appointed for.
We have two people in line. Patrick Notmeyer from the university and Diane. Nobody's indicating they have any comments to make.
We will close the public comment section. Maybe you want some new business review of town.
I'm going to put this book in front of you. As we refer to refresh your. So in 2018, you all did a branding campaign, which is that was the result of the branding campaign before you to take you back. You all probably not actually looked at that all in a while. And out of that book became basically our Bible of colors scheme to be used for any town official logos, flags, clothing. It was discussed doing a town flag, which we really haven't focused on that. So we are down to one flag, the one that is hanging outside right now. And so I'm not really sure I'm actually covering this for Diane. I'm not sure how it came about. If she had a discussion with Emily, who we are sure about perhaps this might be the time to look at that and incorporate enough color scheme. I think we are down to one in fact on that. So as you all know, Diane is is out online. That's why I'm up here before you. This is Diane's project. She met with Brian and put together that brandy campaign for us. And asked him to provide some samples, which Rich will show you an updated version. We had a few that we sent out to you prior. I reached back out to Brian and asked him if he could provide some based on feedback, some just sample. One which is a solid background, so that's what you see before you. So and I'm here just looking for direction from you all as to I like it, I don't like it, you'd like to move forward with a flag if there's one here, or if you'd like to alter one that you see, so basically open the floor for some discussion.
Look at what he can do. Um, the, the.
So seeing for some of the original sections, which I think you had a follow up email from Rich today. Kind of explained Brian's philosophy behind the colors and I can't quote that. From you, but what each color might represent if you were interested in strike flag. I mean, it's really just a preference of if you want something with this.
Symbolism that he was going for was to tie each color to a different component of the strategic plan for the town. Goal being government integrity. Economic, economic development being I think the mint, environment being the darker green. And I don't remember what what teal was, but that was, that was the concept is.
Then last weekend, I asked for a copy of the plan. I want that be 2040 plan. Some thought into it that way. All these colors are.
In the original design that we got, there's one that marked H3. Is there even that we're gonna get an option with that background?
It's just the ones he sent us. So we, in essence, we can.
Yeah, it's marked H3.
H3 is with the off white. That one had the four stripes.
Yeah, I was saying with all the four stripes.
Right. It was that creamy background.
That's what I wanted to. Replacing the flag was just something simple to the point.
Yeah, I appreciate the work you do. Obviously, she's trying to incorporate a lot of ideas that makes more complicated to explain. If someone were to ask me, what are the stripes? Do you know? I put the answer there about the future. And. And yes, the thing regarding that font. It poses a corporate flag. That's what it represents. Solid backgrounds would be my first choice. I think the logo. Making it as large as you, as you can see it, that is what's the flag is important without loss. If someone can't read, the small part of this says give boost to the horizons. It won't go to the logo. If you can't see it, it'd be right in front of you. So I would like to see the logo as big as you can make it practically. On the three by six flag, when you make. And I like the dark rainbow. I like it. I like A3 as well. You know, that incorporates three colors of white, you know, the gold and the green.
That's the lower left.
Yeah, right. That would be not a great.
That design is actually not brand.
Shame on Brian.
The background is supposed to be this color and not that whatever color is.
Well, you have a seal on that. Oh, yeah. What is that one?
So the thing that if you're gonna use the seal, it needs to be.
Oh, you're saying the white background on the logo.
Yeah. Maybe it just looks that way of there. It does, it does look bright white, but even still, it's not the same color. Like there's specific rules in what we are bringing. What color to wear. No, you can do exactly that. My green flag. Absolutely.
If you have access to the attachment that came with the package, you will see that they have some of those logos with the, with the creamy background.
There was all. I mean, I think that if, if everybody likes the dark green in the background, the one thing that we could consider is the other iteration of the logo. That isn't necessarily the feel and what the difference will be kind of an option. If you want to be able to read it, I don't know that you're gonna be able to read. To think the flag ability about this, the logo on the flag will be about fat size right there. You're not gonna be able to read that garbage from afar.
Well, then if you look at the, the argument that you just showed, it, the panel of is small.
Right.
So I think we had the same problem there and it says, oh, that's Elon's flag, Elon University.
I know what you're talking about. It's a brand though. And I mean, look at these flags. So it could be our brand. I'm, I'm down with simple. But I also appreciate doing something a little different. I like A3 with that. Everyone looking at these. The one in the lower right. It, it was like that, but instead of the stripes, it was a green. So we had that with just a solid green. Yeah, the, the shape is, is unique in that right, which could maybe help it stand out. Recognizable is this is Elon's flag instead of having to read like, we feel like we have to people to read this green flag to stand out. The Elon's flag. I think the shape and design of that one, two solid colors can help differentiate ourselves.
And are you, when you, you said with just the shape, you're thinking just the tree shape? So.
Where it has the four stripes, only do it in green. And I have four stripes, do that whole right hand side.
Oh, I see.
And then what with the left side background? That's white. Wow, I think it proposes to leave it like.
That would be my, my thought of it. But I mean, I am not fighting this flag. I think anything you fit could don't look better than our red flag. And. Correct. But you know, we're moving towards a consensus.
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, if you look at the, I don't know if you have the attachment open, J2. Which has that same Chevron, if you will, J2 and J3 have different uh, different seals a little bit. But it does give you that, that off white shows up as an off white background here.
I like the gold around it.
You know, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna fight battle, but when you start using one half the flag for your logo, you minimize the ability to make large enough reading. For the sake of having a photo day. That's all the, the purpose is to fly a flag so people can see it from a distance. Does the border really make a difference, or do you wanna see the logo? Me, the logo is really what's important than you see on. But that's.
Yeah, you know. If we can make the logo, if I don't have a bomb.
Look at the longevity and where you've got light color, it gets soil dirty. And it's got the green, it looks like it's just ancient. But.
I mean, we, we replace our flags at least once a year already. They do, they do, you know, they say they get dirty and.
And just for reference, that's why we're having this conversation, because we do not have, we don't have a replacement flag.
We need, we need. Are you looking for a motion?
Or do you just like, like some guidance to go back and then bring that back up to you?
Whichever way. If you're really pushing for the solid background with the cream logo, fairly simple unless you're looking at making another.
Yeah, right, yes.
That was only coming.
That would go.
You're bringing that actually now.
Yeah.
So, so the logo with the cream background. So what you, is that what, I can't see what your point is. Okay, cream background.
Design, the dark. Whatever.
Because the difference of A3 is white. If it goes on the outside, it's supposed to be on the inside. A B3, what's, why?
Why instead of the.
Yeah, up there anyway. It might just be that if you're about to sub vision, but that doesn't look like it's. Yeah, well, it's wider.
Yeah, it is.
Let's say we were not supposed to change those colors. Right there. Those have to be rolled.
Be consistent. Well, and actuality is a little better anyway.
But there, it should have an outline of things. Yeah. Yeah, they just this on green for us to review and then.
Maybe you can minimize the size of one, but like you see the toe top there. One of the left is a small one, this is moved to the left. But the one on the right is much smaller.
Now, getting to Quinn's point about the Chevron having two colors on the background. Someone says, look, my mind, I'll link to the designer names. You know, logo could go on the larger side as opposed to whatever. Just one color.
Go on, I'll give you that rendering on the page. The logo. Large as welcome to be without thinking the word started.
Can we get a green coffee down on the meeting sheet?
Well, but you got a number. We have to do it in, in performance with our US flag. Now, how big that is. So we couldn't go for like, we have to go small. Yeah.
So my next question, how many would you have, would you wanna order maybe? Vision. Because.
I think that's a very good question.
And what locations would we fly the flag? Fireballs?
We fly US flag at Magnolia Cemetery. But, but I think we're the only location for the town flag. I, I think the red one, I think we, we bought a supply of them. They were supplying ones, but we will have it fun. So it's not like, I don't know how we've reordered it over the years. So I, you know, we have to find out who we, no, I don't even know who we got it from. We have to find someone to make the flag and look at cost for half a dozen or a dozen or. No, they aren't. Like I said, we, we have, we replace the US flag every year. I think we may have put, that may be our second new flag since I've been here for the town flag. We've kind of rationed, we didn't have many.
All right, moving on, approval at fiscal year 23 audit service.
This is something we, we do every year to hire our auditor and next time would be to hire someone to do our financial reporting for us. I'm. And proposals from Pablo Zekiel to do our audit. They, they've done a great job for us in the past and they will continue to use them. Recommend we continue to use them for this year. There may be some changes coming at the state level that, that limit how long we can use an auditor. Requires to go out more often to to bid, which is becoming a difficult thing because of the revolvers are decreasing. But we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Is that pending legislation?
It was pending legislation. I don't know if it made it through or not. I haven't heard that it's gonna be adopted.
To be found out.
What? Yep.
Because, you know, we used to have an auditor who also did our financial statement. Now we have to pay an auditor and another company to do the financial statement. And then we also have to look at a different auditor. Like you said, it's becoming more problematic, of course, spending more taxpayer money on things. We used to spend a lot less on.
Yep. Yep, I'll, I'll check to where that is. Well, or in different parts of the state. We're fortunate that we're near Raleigh and Durham and Greensboro and Winston. But, you know, get out in Wayne County or, you know, you get out in the hills, they're few and far between. I mean, there's, there's logic to it, so auditors don't get into it a lot and miss the same thing year after year after year. You change them over so that new eyes, new ways and I mean, the whole idea is to minimize the chance of any kind of fraud or anything that or missed. You know, bad practices.
Right.
But it, it, there's a practical part of it as well that is hard to do. And you're right, our, our costs have closed to double when we had to split and go to. That actually came, that came via the, the accounting standards board, not didn't start with state, started with them and say, oh, how can you have a company do your financial reports and have an auditor within that company audit financial reports? They get logic, but it does create an issue is that, that your costs go up and you have fewer and fewer companies to do the work.
Questions, comments? Yes, I can. All in favor say aye. And Becky does such a great job.
Yes, she does.
You know, the other side of that is that if something looks funny, she's gonna see it.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so there's two sides to that as well, that she knows. You know, what our accounts look like, what the audit should look like. If something seems off, she's gonna on that. So kind of basically.
You're right.
And all right. Moving on, we have approval of fiscal year financial reporting contract.
Pretty much same story. This is now Stunt Stewart McGowan. And again, we they used to do our audit, do our financial report and our audit. We had split as we brought that in with our auditor. And, and Scott Stewart, we were just doing financial report. Again, Patricia's has been, does a nice job, is very helpful to us, is available to turn the year for advice and suggestions and things. And both of them were within the budget numbers that we came up with, so. A, a little bit, not significantly. The audit went up potentially a little bit more because we are probably have to do a, but they, but due to the next level audit, it's called single audit. Because of the amount of federal money through COVID relief money that we spent. As we, you know, we allocated it to past expenses, so it would be extensive this year. Last year. And so we're proud to do that, that next level audit. That's only about $2,000 more. So it's, and again, it's within the budget.
Moving on to report.
I'll be fast.
It's not, it's not as.
No. We, I was announced, we hired a new planner this week. She started on Monday, Jenna Peterson. She's working under Lori, a planning director. And she's jumping right in and she's a recent grad from Brooklyn. Yep. So she's fitting her well and getting right to work. So we're glad to have her on, on board and fill that gap. The next summer movie on the lawn at Beth Schmidt Park is Friday, the 21st, not this, not this Friday, but this on a Friday. Now, that's Friday the 15th. But the movie is gonna be back in the future. Starts roughly at 8:30 depending on sunset. Freshments will be available. Just a reminder, everybody, that farmers market is every Thursday at 3:00 PM. This is a, it's Elon's farmers market now, and we do it cooperatively with Elon Community Church in their parking lots. That's where it's located. And we've been averaging 18 to 20 plus vendors every week. So it's turning out to be a really good location. The vendors are, are very pleased with the season so far. We got obviously fruits and vegetables, flowers, some homemade items, breads, salsa. It's a, it's a wide variety of products this year, so encourage everybody to swing by. This Saturday is the second, is week two of our summer sweat class. That's held at the small little town park on North Old, correct? Just a reminder that summer is no time to neglect your fitness goals. Check it out. And just remind. And just remind everybody to check out the community calendar website that has all the ongoing events. Could use at various parks and whatever meetings come up, so take a look at the calendar.
Today, John, I went to the element chamber for, for the economic development committee. Some of our state representatives and our federal representatives, just talking about this. Want to talk about former workers, yes, my. They're, they're trying to do that with their camp. Nice, but it sounded like I bragged pretty heavily on you, but Elon's doing things and listening to what other people, other towns in the state are doing. We're definitely moving forward and I think we are gonna get some excitement. We've been seeing a bit of pitch out there for the skate park. Probably get some help from the state and federal level to remain in contact. Hopefully they can point us in some direction for help. So looking to a question to you, Rich, I've had a lot of people ask me about, have you heard about a committee, skating committee? When is all that stored, when, where can I point them in a direction?
Um, that actually was on my list to get to today, which I did not get to today, was to touch base with Phyllis. I know she has several folks who have already gotten involved. I would have worked with her to expand that into, you know, five, seven, nine people. I did talk to the folks at the university on Monday. They wanted the list of our volunteers so they can make sure that, you know, they have some students who would certainly be interested. And probably somebody from administration that they, they'd suggest as well to help look at university facilities or properties that might be available. Hopefully we'll, we'll have something, have a mechanism in place this week. Thanks, I need to talk to Phyllis in the morning.
Way I can talk to the group today, this is great for Elon, that's something, something great for elements. So everybody was really excited. I think we've got some people on our fans who are looking forward to have one. Plaza, I saw the tents were moving now.
Yep.
Moving.
Last, it, it is moving, it's not physically moving up there yet. They have applied for the approach to the county. There was some confusion over some of the language they used. Delayed things, think that's resolved or being resolved. The product manager is actually on vacation right now. So when she gets back, I suspect that we'll, that we'll see some activity out there. That might be another week or two weeks, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I guess it maybe is how it works, but to think, I've noticed that some of the shoes that are hanging on the telephone wires have been removed, there might be some still hanging in some spots, but I've seen places that were, is that all the ones that's sinking them down?
No, I, I told them that that was not their job to go mess around with other people's lines. But they did call Spectrum Cable and they, they showed up relatively short period of time and removed a whole bunch of them. Next day, there's a couple more pairs up there, but you know, and we, we got hit hard as the students were leaving town. We've got a lot, a lot of them cleaned up.
Yeah, I'm gonna reiterate with please, yeah, I think a lot of great things. I did want to come in, I think, I, I enjoy seeing our newsletter coming in with our water bills. I think it's really good because a lot of new people move to our town. They don't have a, a way to find out what's happening. I'm guilty, I don't know the website often, but this does help me to see what's going on when I see new additions to our police department staff and the retirements. I think that's important for people to realize. I think this is just a good, good obligation that I hope we continue to do that. As, as we hire people on staff, to let people know who they are and and I've had some neighbors move across the street. And I don't know if they've actually connected to Elon Connect to get information through text, email or voicemail. The thing happens, kind of things we actually change and not assume thereby knows that. I don't need to die with a complication so that people know that you have this. Yeah, man, and Jill, you, you did this. Good job, man. Um, so we're not meeting the end of this month. Then you'll walk around. So I'll leave my fans.
Then we can our downtown.
Will be in cancel this now.
So all we have in Paris?
Yeah, come on.
I think Phil said he'd cover it. Send him your receipts.
Thank you for coming tonight. To my point, that's where you, you know, got the information from. So, uh, you know, we do want more citizens to attend the meetings. Appreciate you coming. This was definitely lighter weight than normal for sure. Uh, which is not a bad thing. Um, but, uh, we do appreciate and welcome.
We do have an election coming up. So we will have, um, for election and I believe that too individually. And so newsletter, there were already some of the public events. Remember at that point? I was going to ask about those skate park committee and about the product that I wanted to make sure. So, um, I saw in your memo that Phyllis was working on. You know, with that my shorts moving.
I said I should have said it. There's not one. Sixteen years of in the business, but I think it's I'm imposing my own your speech right now. You got to say
Yeah, I'm imposing my own Give up the well sign up.
Now I'm
Got it.
Second. I want to say versus that.
Oh, that's they, um, they have
pressing issues that have been
That would be and you can file either a professional or And so it's all those